Hello?
Where's that? Hello?
Maybe. Maybe. Did you realize that was part of your job title, Steve? Or job description? In your job description? But, but, you know, just so you know, Rex was always the backup if we didn't have a clerk to get the videos on. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. I, I don't know. Are we live now, Matt? We're live.
Is there a sign-in sheet? Is it up there? In case anybody needs to know, sign-up sheets over there. If you'd like to sign in to speak. I don't. Was that, uh, was that emailed? Alright. Josh. Yeah, yeah. I got two.
Okay, call the meeting to order if everyone completes their eyes for the pledge allegiance and then at the moment silent refresh, please.
Can you hear that, Matt?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
We may not have... Do we have?
Four.
Try it again, that's a little closer.
Hello, hello? It's on. Okay, good. Yeah, there we go. Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Here. President. Here. Here. President.
Yes.
Okay, did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes from the September 4th meeting? Any corrections or concerns? Hearing that all in favor, approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Uh, there are no public hearings this evening. Tonight, we do have, uh, communications and announcements. This month, September. Office of Mayor London, Ohio proclamation, childhood cancer awareness month. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas childhood cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease for children in the United States, stealing futures and inflicting immense hardships on families, and whereas, while research has led to incredible advancements, many childhood cancer treatments are decades old and can cause long-term health complications for survivors. And whereas, September is a dedicated time to reflect on the immense bravery of young chil- cancer patients, remember the precious lives lost, and acknowledge the incredible resilience of survivors. And whereas, it is our collective duty to amplify the voices of these young warriors and their families, ensuring their courage inspires tangible action, and whereas, the compassion and commitment of our community healthcare providers, researchers, and volunteers are the bedrock of hope, providing vital care and support to children and families in their greatest time of need. And whereas, we must champion continued investments in innovative therapies and cutting-edge research to increase survival rates and improve the quality of life for all children with cancer, and whereas, our community stands united in the belief that every child deserves a life free from cancer, and we are committed to working together to make that a reality. Now, therefore, Patrick J. Clauser, Mayor, City of London, Ohio, do here proclaim September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of London, Ohio. I call upon all residents to join me in raising awareness, supporting those affected by this disease, and advocating for a future where childhood cancer is no longer a threat. And this evening, we have the Andrews family here, um, with their daughter Caroline, and I got this proclamation to come down. And do I hear it's a birthday today? Tomorrow? Alright. I'll come down and hand this to you.
Happy birthday.
Okay, on to audience concerns. And we have, um, a number of them tonight, so, uh, we'll go with five minutes. Um, the first up is Tara Shoemaker. If you could come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Um, one of the selling points of this density, uh, housing that's going in at Madison Reserve is that they are affordable, so I thought, what the heck? I'll put it in a search engine and a mortgage calculator. And according to the mortgage calculator, with twenty percent down, you'd need a combined income of eighty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. That also includes the interest rate, which is, you know, whatever happens at the time, property taxes and the HOA fees, and no debt. And I did another search on the internet to find out what the average income of London is, and it's forty-eight thousand dollars. So, that doesn't add up. So, I think what's gonna happen is we're gonna turn this community into a bedroom community, and the people that wanna come here and live in a bedroom community want larger houses on more land. So, I think you should think about that and keep that in your minds while you guys decide how you vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Matt Daley. If you could state your name and, uh, your address for the record, please.
Matt Daley, ninety-nine Andrew Court, West. So, thank you again. Spoken here a few times now, uh, mainly about traffic parks, um, and being cautious about the long-term commitments we're making, like this plan, uh, especially since there are, there are those who are predicting that demographic change will, uh, ease the affordable housing, uh, issue. Okay, we don't wanna overshoot the demand, um, and policy issues with, uh, everyone's properties. But, today, I wanna kind of broaden it a little bit, um, to more of the city of London, uh, and ask the question, can London afford attainable housing developments? Um, this is gonna go kind of along what she was talking about, but when we look at the, uh, for example, if you just take the twenty-eight percent yearly income to housing expense ratio that a lot of, uh, mortgage people use, that's about seventy-five thousand dollars on a two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar house, five-and-a-half percent interest, five percent down, twelve-hundred, uh, in insurance, and twenty-five-hundred in taxes a year. Excuse me. So, if we're looking at about a seventy-five-thousand-dollar income level, uh, if we predict that one-hundred percent of these people moving in here are gonna be new income to the, new taxable income to the City of London, which is not gonna happen, but we're talking about two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-six dollars, so about two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars of, uh, new taxable, um, new taxes coming into the City of London through the income tax. Of course, and that's, that's the reoccurring cash flows that we'll be seeing. Uh, there'll be some one-time cash flows, and I did not even try to attempt to get all these, but the one I did try to attempt is the, uh, taxes from the construction workers and the builders and all that stuff. Essentially, the NAHB predicts about a hundred-and-seventy-six jobs per one-hundred units. They, and the report I was looking at is about fifty-five K per job. That was twenty-fifteen, so I did a three-point-three percent, uh, uh, inflation adjustment over time that ends up being about seventy-four thousand dollars per, uh, job that's produced for building these houses. Um, so, in the end, the total salary's gonna be about thirty-five million dollars. Uh, that's gonna get the C- City of London a one-time tax increase of about five-hundred thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Didn't look at permits, didn't look at, uh, builders', uh, the builders' profit and stuff like that, but... And I did try to look at the expense size of the equation, and that's mainly fire, police. Uh, if we just take, uh, a ratio per one-thousand residents, there's gonna be, uh, eight-hundred-and-seven approximately people in this development. Uh, that leads to, uh, the police ratio right now, as it currently stands, is about one-point-nine-six. Um, the fire ratio is about one-point-seven per thousand residents. If we wanna keep that ratio, we would need additional one-point-five police officers and one-point-four fire, uh, fighters. Uh, and, by the way, I did not include part-time employees in the fire department calculation. Uh, if we figure an all-in total of one-K per job, that's three-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars worth of safety service money that we're gonna be expensing yearly on two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. If all that's brand-new money, down to if only sixty percent of that's new money to, uh, London, a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars coming in. So, again, can London afford this? It's not a question that, it's just, it's not just a numbers question. We need to think about what our priorities and everything like that are, but the numbers are gonna dictate if we have good fire service, if we have good police service. I didn't include any of the other city services, uh, in the expense side either, uh, tax, tax collectors that are gonna be needed to, for the additional taxes and everything like that. And those are the direct impacts. I didn't even try to go through the indirect impacts. It gets really iffy, and I don't have two weeks to spend on a report for you guys, but... So, I recognize this is an incomplete analysis, but it's the only analysis I've seen on this. There's nothing else that's come up in any of these meetings about how this is gonna actually be affordable for the City of London. So, I'm, I'm, again, I'm just asking you to weigh the perceived public good of what's this affordable housing is gonna be versus the cost to the neighbors and all the other citizens of London. And I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Tommy Boyd. Could please state your name and address for the record, please? You have five minutes.
Thomas Boyd, Tom Boyd, forty-eight North Union Street, London, Ohio. Uh, very good lead-in too, because that is kind of a big thing going on, is, you know, our capacities. Leads into mine, I'm gonna start with this one that was simply brought up a couple meetings ago about the new trunk line, four-thirteen-point-five million dollars that we had our rates raised for. Do we know if there is any progress on that? I know unfortunately, Mayor Clauser's our usual one that has attended the meetings there, but... Anyone here, anything lately on that? And... Nope. The rate increase that we did with our BPU for increasing our rates, and there was a thirteen-million-dollar chunk of it that was for a...
Yeah, he's talking about the east-side trunk, um, sewer trunk. That's, that'd probably be a mid-Ohio question.
Alright. Um, I guess on the side note, do we have any dates, or can we attend those meetings as the public?
You'd have to get it on their website. Check it out.
Yeah. Good information to have on now. Um, and so, yeah, that was into that one. The next builds upon this, 'cause yes, it is, where are we at? Within our capacity on different items. And so, when really thinking about, you know, what's gonna go into our comprehensive plan? Can we change this? Can we add this? The main question I would have right now is, you know, how far done are we with the comprehensive plan? Is it, and I know unfortunately, the person I'd like to ask isn't here, so I understand, this one's gonna get kind of blown past tonight, but I wish you guys got put into the loop a little bit more up there also, 'cause that is a big piece of our city. I'm sorry to say it. Um, I know I kinda got cut off short last time when we were getting into it, but for that to not, our storm sewer, to not have that survey within this comprehensive plan, I don't believe is a good idea, or is pretty much negligent towards the city. If you wanna fix roads, you wanna fix sidewalks, anything else, you need to know what's under our feet. And the fact that Omni Fiber has come through, I have seen pieces of our storm sewer coming out of their holes. Uh, my front yard area, the sidewalk to the street there, each year does now continue to dip further and further down. One spot is about a foot deep already, where the earth is just seeming to sink. You know, we have sinkholes in this city, and this is from our head of street department, Bill Long, so I mean, feel free to ask him, but that's, I feel, a large issue. We had one just down the street here that was about three feet wide, four feet deep. And so, without addressing that actual part of this and having that survey done, it leads us to a tough spot of knowing, hey, what else can we put on top of it? And so, I really hope we can progress with that, and if we are kind of in the stage of still mapping it or finding it, my recommendation is going and asking every grandparent and great-grandparent who might have worked in London around nineteen-sixty to nineteen-eighty. That might be our best intel for what's underneath here. And so, that was kind of the part with our storm survey, but hopefully we have some updates on that at the next one. Uh, hopefully tonight, we talk about the sidewalk grading that was approved. Um, I'm not gonna waste any of my time on that, but, you know, I would like to hear maybe when that will begin, or how we are pushing forward through with that. Steve, I do have, that, I'm sorry, you're getting brought into a lot. But, that's, yep, kind of one of the things that this city does need, eh, especially with it kind of being seen now. And unfortunate part is that was the second accident that gentleman had with that wheelchair going over curbs. And so, hopefully we can get that thing going. Last one, I guess, could kind of go towards you also. It had been told for two years, hey, it's on us, but we finally got our first sidewalk grant from ADA. Awesome. Would you, are you interesting, interested in going back for a new grant for that, or have we started any kind of process for continuing that grant application?
I'm not aware of anything on the ADA grant this time, so it's something to look at. I, I will say, we're wide open to looking at any grants for converting any of these projects.
Yep.
It's, it's just, it's a longer process than that.
I'd... I'd just say, hey, reach on out to them again, hopefully, and we can keep... I'd just say, hey, reach on out to them again, hopefully, and we can keep that going. I talked with Baldwin and Sons because after talking with them, looking at that, I'm happy I got one on my corner. When you break down the math on that, we saved eighteen-hundred dollars each for each of those corners. So if you had two ramps put in, that's thirty-six-hundred dollars that you, the homeowner, didn't have to pay. And that's, there's two-hundred-and-twenty more. And so after talking with Baldwin and Sons, they said they're down to their last five to seven after only having ten last year, so they're done. And they said, hey, they'd be interested in getting more of them, so hopefully we can keep pushing for that and maybe pop it back in the comprehensive plan this time also. That's all I have, I guess. Thank you much.
Thank you. Up next, we have Jim Boyd. You could state your name and address for the record, please? You have five minutes.
My name is Jim Boyd, three-sixty-four Ashford Avenue. I wanted to speak today about ordinance one-eighty-twenty-five, the Madison Reserve Project. Looking at that, I, I have to say, and I attended the planning commission meeting for that, and I do have to say that after, I, I had to leave early for that. I was going to another meeting, but I was there for a very, very highly-attended planning commission meeting, and I heard, other than the developer, I heard no one speak positively about it, other than the value of the homes, right? So I was really shocked when I saw that much negative comment coming from the community and the planning commission doing a four-O positive to bring this forward to you. I was a little concerned by that because I wondered if they actually even attended the same meeting that I was at, even though I saw them there. I can sum up the problem and what was brought up by many of, actually all of the, the people that were commenting at that committee, or at that committee meeting was, it all came back to density and that the density is way too high. I, I would, I know you have the, you have the public hearing coming at the next meeting. I've called out some things here for you, and I'll email you so that you've got that in front of you to be able to look, but some research that you can do between now and then to know what we're talking about. And your, in the codified ordinance is twelve-fourty-eight oh seven. If we're looking at an R-three, seventy-five-hundred square feet and a sixty-foot frontage is your standard, thirty-two percent coverage of the property. That's what's in the, in there. That can be brought down. The PUDs can reduce that at twenty-five percent. Brings you down to fifty-six twenty-five. After that, then they can go with an additional twenty-five, up to twenty-five percent on the size of that property based on the fact that it is affordable, and I'll quote it, "lower and moderately priced as determined by the planning commission." You can permit, you may permit a bonus reduction in yard lot and setback requirements with no compensative yard lot or setback increases required. So when I'm looking at this, we've done this before, that brings you down to, and they've given, for the most part, the full twenty-five percent to bring you down to forty-two, a forty-two-hundred-and-nineteen square foot lot that my house is sitting on. For those of you that have been in town long enough, we've done this once before, and it was through a company called Four and One. Okay? Right? We've done this through that before. Those areas were stacked in, one on top of another. Your houses were, I could reach out and touch almost, I'm exaggerating, but they were that close. And that area has for a long time degraded into an urban blight and had, how do we work with that? How do we keep that? The property values have just gone into the toilet on those houses.
Where is this?
One of the first places that I can think of is right there across the street from the High Street, this project, which is down and, right there on High Street. Greg, help me out on what's the...
Andrew Court.
Andrew, no, no, no.
That was the other one.
Channing.
Channing, Bristol.
Right, back in through there. So that, that's one of the perfect examples.
That one is one of them.
That is one of the perfect examples of, of the Four and One project, right? That you would see what we're running into. There are several pieces there, so you know, A, section A on the one, one-twenty, on twelve-sixty-two-oh-eight is what gives you the whole reduction availability. Research that and look at it because I've got some questions in there. That they can, that the lot can be reduced by twenty-five percent? Sure, that's because it's PUD. The width and setback can, can be reduced, however, there's a total reduction must be matched by an equal total increases except where else, and that's where you can use the lot reduction based on the affordability. My first question is, as everyone has pointed out already, let's look at affordability. Is it truly affordable? Not when your median income is sixty-one thousand dollars in the city. That's at a single level. At the family level, your median income right now, based on what I've looked at, is around eighty thousand, and that challenges you for fifty percent of the prop, fifty percent of the people can't afford this property. I'll also call out too, and this is of concern, so if that twenty-five percent reduction is based on affordability, one of the things that my question is, is how do we guarantee that that affordability price that's talked about right there remains affordable until they're sold? I see nothing in there on that, and if we go based on what was done through the London Landing being advertised at the high twos, and you get one property at two-sixty-seven, and the majority of the properties moving out of there at three-fifty and up, we don't, where's the affordability? Granted, it's twenty-five percent of it needs to be affordable, but how do we protect that affordability and guarantee that that doesn't creep up as things happen? And as we go through the number of years that it takes to move these out, even if it's two years, what does that take? Basically, I, I'll, I'll leave you with those, but my thing is, is that this is, this is, the density on this is too high. Your pro, your, uh, this is not something that's going to be, if it even is affordable to the families that are in the area, it is one that the properties themselves, is it one that they truly want to buy because of how small the backyard is going to be when you take a forty-one-foot-by-two-hundred-and-twelve-foot lot and put a twelve-hundred-square-foot house on that? The only way to give you square footage is to go up into multi-story houses, two- and three-story houses, which I saw in the plans that they were laying out. So, um, I'll, I'll finish up with, I, I want to make sure that we are representing the city, that we are looking at what is the best interest of the city, not the developer, and that we are, we are making sure that this fits in what we need to go forward and to help those people within our community to be able to get good housing. One of the things that I, I'm afraid that we're doing in all of the development that has been going on right now and the future development that's being put out there is that we're looking at profits over people. And I think we need to, I think we need to back up and we need to look at that people or who we have to look at first. And I, I was at, I'll, I'll close with this. I was told, the, the developer did get up and speak, you know, we could reduce the, if we reduce the density on that because they did hear what everybody was saying, we'd have to raise the prices. Ah, that's not true. That's not true. By reducing the, the number of properties, they're saying they need to raise the price, they would have to change the price and raise the price. Why? Because they want to maintain their level of profitability. I'm not taking that away from them. I understand we're here to make a profit. But if that doesn't match with what the city wants or what the city needs, then the city needs to say, I'm sorry, maybe you're not the developer to bring this to fruition for what we're after because this doesn't match what the city needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Linda Heil. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. President, you don't have this down, but I'd received an email from someone that wanted me to read that during the audience concern, so we chose to add that to the end.
I'm Linda Heil. I live at sixty-one Chandler Avenue. We own sixty-five and sixty-seven Chandler as well. I'm here to talk today about my, my ongoing support of you to help repair our sidewalks in town. Five years ago, I started walking a lot. It's the only exercise you could do during COVID. I walked, and my goal was to walk thirty miles a week. I tried to stick with that. A year and a half later, I stumbled over a sidewalk that I thought I knew every sidewalk in town, but not this one. The, the gap in the sidewalk was two-and-a-half inches, and I crashed onto my forehead and my nose and went to, it's been four, a four-year issue. I went to the ER. I was, I was diagnosed with a concussion. My nose was, was smashed. I went to the, my primary care doctor, then to the OSU Concussion Clinic. They have the ability to send you many places, but they sent me to physical therapy, they sent me to vision therapy, to, oops, I don't know how to turn that off. Sorry. The op, I, I went to see an ophthalmologist, a dentist, neurologist, had an MRI, went to the ear, nose, and throat doctor who then operated, darn it, who then did surgery to rebuild my nose because I couldn't breathe out of one side. Physical therapist helped me with proprioception, which means you can't tell where your body is in space. And so if I walked around something, I would walk about four feet away from it because I couldn't tell where my body was. That continues today somewhat. I also did the vision therapy, which helped a great deal. They had me switch to a different, I also went with an audiologist because I had ringing in the ears. They changed my neurologist to a trauma neurologist who handles soldiers who returned from war. I tried, we had to do a second round of physical therapy, and then the third time was vestibular, which is, they're, they're testing your crystals in your ear. After about five weeks, he said, this isn't working, we're going to have to give up. To make my story short, I still suffer from this concussion with loud noises, Andy, loud noises and bright lights. Anything will make me dizzy to the point where we have to get motion sickness medication for me and put me to bed for hours. So I'm thrilled that you're considering fixing the sidewalks in town. Anything over an inch off or half an inch off, by ADA standards, has to be fixed. So obviously my two-and-a-half-inch place was way out of line. I had three members of my family in wheelchairs. Where I fell, they never could have gotten across that sidewalk where, the way it was. I have a friend now who is at the Madison House, who does ride her electric cart in the street because she can't ride on the sidewalks. So I really, I am so supportive of you for protecting our people. It's the right thing to do for people, whether they're in a wheelchair or they're walking. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mike Cutler. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Mike Cutler. I live in St. Petersburg, Florida. I do own two houses here, though. One is on North Union, ninety-one North Union, and the other one is eighty-five, eighty-one East Fifth Street. My house is right in front of Linda's on Chandler. I also wrote about sidewalk. I believe I emailed the president because I wasn't sure what district represented me about the sidewalks, and it's just flat-out embarrassing to see the condition of sidewalks. Specifically, I pointed out Fourth, and I pointed out the sidewalk on Main, including Cowling Park, although it's not bad except for one section, but it's embarrassing. Who is liable when someone's injured due to a, out of whack?
Be the property owner.
Okay. So what is your power to do anything to force that property owner?
Be the enforcement, code enforcement. So, I mean...
Well...
Unfortunately, right, what I view is the city needs to repair all their sidewalks before we can enforce property owners. But once the city...
Well, that's a proper thing to do, but not necessarily has to come first, right? You're saying, well, we need to replace the city sidewalks and then let's go to...
Before we go on a big push for sidewalk enforcement, the city needs to have a plan. The city needs to repair all their sidewalks first, in my opinion.
Well, then you're...
Then the property, I mean, maybe the property owners, maybe the property owners would, you know, see the city are taking care of their sidewalks, and the property owners would take care of their sidewalks.
You really think so?
I mean, that's...
I'd be shocked. Human nature is what it is. If I don't have to spend a dime on my sidewalk, I won't. I understand what you're saying. I would encourage you to not wait for public action, as in city action, to push homeowners to repair their sidewalks. It's a danger and shocking that there aren't a lot of lawsuits related to the liability. I thank you very much for your time.
May I answer for a quick minute? So I'm a big advocate for, for this and have been for a long time. Unfortunately, I think the sidewalk situation right now, it's like if you, someone has very tall grass, you know, there's not a lot of enforcement unless somebody complains and files a complaint and says, I have an issue with this, because it's, it'll be a big job, without a doubt, throughout the whole city to get all the sidewalks fixed. So, I mean, if someone really has an issue, whether they're here tonight or they're listening, if you have an issue with that, you know, you have to make that complaint so that it's known because right now, no one's out walking the sidewalk, no one's measuring those, no one's really doing that that I'm aware of, and there may be things going on that I'm not aware of, but that is the process right now, unfortunately.
And who is that complaint filed with?
Well, you would probably start with the Safety Service Director, who sits right here, and then he would probably turn that over to the zoning code enforcement officer and go from there, because letters have to be sent and, and things have to be done so that people can follow that process.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
All right, Greg, you got that?
Okay. This is from Andrea Dillian. She comes here somewhat frequently. She addressed it to me, but she told me that she didn't have everybody's email address. She really wants to address council as a whole. She said, I've, I'm very, I was very upset and disheartened to hear that a gentleman was struck while riding his mobility scooter through London, having to ride in the street because of the disrepair of many of the sidewalks throughout the city. My father was combined to a mobility scooter for the last years of his life and had to ride in the streets as well because of the lack of sidewalks or the condition of the existing sidewalks. I know on several occasions, he needed tires replaced riding through the city due to the rough terrain being the sidewalks. This bothered me so much that I decided to reach out to see if there were monies available to the city to alleviate the cost of homeowners, who by and large cannot afford the cost of these repairs and seems, and seems to be the administration's main concern for not moving forward on making any repairs. My first call was to Rob Newman, a resident of the city, retired after thirty years from the City of Columbus as a grant writer. He made two phone calls, called me back and informed me there were two grants available through the state of Ohio, a Safe Routes grant and a Link U.S. grant, and that there is also a federal grant through MORPC, which is the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, called the STBG or Surface Transportation Block Grant. My second phone call was to a friend of mine, Kevin Miller, who is the Executive Director of Opportunities for Ohioans with Disabilities. Kevin informed me there are several grant programs that cities can apply for, two through ODOT, the TAP or the Transportation Alternative Program, which is a Safe Routes to School Program, and a Small City Program grant, which, which provides federal funds to cities with populations between five and twenty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine people, which supports roadways, sidewalk safety, and pedestrian projects that include sidewalk repair and construction. I have, I got all this information with just two phone calls. Now, several years ago, my brother took Rob Newman to the mayor's office and introduced him to Pat Klosser. He did this because of the knowledge Mr. Newman has and his years of experience as City of Columbus grant writer. Mr. Newman offered his assistance to the mayor if he ever needed it. Mr. Newman has never been contacted. My question is why? There are residents of London with exceptional knowledge on subjects that could help this city considerably reduce the cost that home and business owners would need to bear and assist the city in receiving monies from the federal and state level that could help fund projects that are needed. I also blame council. We have business owners and attorney and one councilman who wines and dines with state reps, senators and state and federal, and state and federal movers and shakers that if asked could also provide this information or point this councilman in the right direction. Someone needs to think outside of the box or at least outside the city limits to find answers to some of our issues. There is money out there that we could be receiving for a myriad of city issues. Why do we not employ grant writer? I know we share one with the county, but there is so much money out there for all kinds of infrastructures, police and fire, parks and rec, et cetera. I think it makes sense, or a lot of sense, if even, if a part-time capacity, we hire someone to capture those monies to use for our wonderful city. Thank you, and I will... Thank you, and I will attend the next council meeting with additional information. Andrea Dillian, who lives on East Fifth Street.
Thank you. Onto committee reports. Greg, you have anything?
Well, the Finance Committee has not met recently. Uh, we moved our meeting to the 22nd because we knew that the Law Director wanted a little more time than we were giving, her meeting on a Monday with a Thursday meeting. So this will be the 22nd, 5:30 in the room next door. Um, I'm going to give you a little heads up and Mr. Saltzman may address some of this. Um, if, if you're sitting at this table today, you might want to be there because there, we're going to have some big money issues that are going to come forward. Uh, there's the, the cost overruns next door at the police project are going to have to be addressed. And, um, I don't have all the details, I don't want to share it. Half the details, maybe Mr. Saltzman will enlighten us, but next Monday will be a, a real frank discussion about those things. So you might want to come to that meeting. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Brett?
Uh, yeah, September 9th, I attended a, uh, public service, uh, weren't going to have a meeting, but just a discussion. We had a discussion and then we had a meeting after all, and I have the, uh, Parks and Rec report. The last day of the pool opening, opened was, uh, Sunday, August 31st. They held a free swim day with free admission and food. Uh, all work on the new shelter roof has been completed. Pumpkin Palooza will be held on Saturday, October 11th from nine to noon. Merrimack hosted a wiffle ball tournament on the 31st of August. Um, added some fall decorations, ran a digital sign at Triangle Park. Fallout for youth volleyball. And that's about it for that one. And I have the, uh, attended also the, uh, public safety meeting and I have the fire chiefs report. They did a departmental EMS training, case-based medical assessment and management through Ohio Health, departmental fire training, pump and drivers training, building, construction. Posted several students for ride time for tolls and grant paramedic class, provided EMS coverage for football games. Administered rescue task force, stop the bleed classes for county departments. Began creating bid speci, specifications for 103 East High Street showers and exterior and started preparing for Fire Safety Month.
All right, thank you. Rich?
September the 9th, we had the Safety Service Meeting. Uh, all three committee members were present. I called the meeting, the order at 6:07 minutes of the August 12th meeting were approved as written, 3-0 vote. Chief Nickel was away on other business. Sergeant Harris gave the police report. Uh, during the police report, they did request funds be moved from the dispatch salary line to miscellaneous police to pay for central dispatching for the year. The amount is $62,000, uh, and I believe that's on tonight, 18225. Uh, vote to send to council was taken. Uh, we had two yes votes, one no vote on the motion, uh, approved. Mr. Stahl will sponsor this motion tonight and Mr. Stahl will also give the police report to council. I would like to bring up, if you could put, uh, Mr. Clark, if you could put that picture up on the, of the new. Okay. Uh, we do have a new police patch that I'm, I'm very proud of. The officers made this patch up, um, and they're going to be putting it on their uniforms. So I do have a picture of it, it'll come up after a bit. I just wanted everybody to see it. Uh, you heard the fire and EMS report, uh, last year or this year so far, we've had 1,900 calls for service. At the same time in 2024, we had 1,677. We are up 223 calls on the year. Uh, Safety Service Director talked about the fire department building, uh, referenced all the repairs and updates that need to be done. Uh, also talked about the plumbing and underground at the new police building. Uh, it's coming along nicely now after experiencing some soil settling problems. As you can tell, uh, they're moving right along on it. And under new business, we had none. Under old business, we had none. We adjourned at 6:22. Next Safety Service Committee meeting will take place October the 14th, 6:00 p.m. in the conference room next door. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, wasn't able to attend the cert, the Public Service Committee meeting, but, um, I have the street department's report and I'll highlight a few of those, um, from that report. Uh, Bill Long reported that, uh, new storm sewer was installed in North Main and new storm sewer in, on Midway, and also they were working on the third ward storm sewer area. I think that might be completed now, is that right? Okay. Uh, they trimmed around some trees around town. Uh, they've been helping out with the trash department during their shortage of staff. Uh, he met with ODOT to talk about state route changes and the paving program. And I believe he said that 42 and 38 would begin in 2026. And 56 and 665 would be in 2028. And, uh, he met with ODOT to talk about small city grant, which involves, uh, fixing, well, paving, uh, Fourth Street between Oak and, um, Main Street. And then also, I don't know if any of you noticed, but they're working on the park, the skateboard park and the basketball court over on Park Avenue. So that's the, uh, legislation that was passed a while back to mill that down and fill it with, um, new paving. So that's what's going on over there. Uh, the next Public Service Committee meeting is October 14th at 5:00 in the meeting room next door. That's it.
All right, thank you. Shannon?
Um, I just sit on the Finance Committee. We meet on Monday, so I got nothing at this time.
All right, thank you. John?
Public Safety Committee briefing from September 9, 2025. Seth Frye was sworn in on the 8th as our latest officer. He has his OP, O P O T A certificate and is completing his field training with various FPOs. The facility construction is progressing with additional costs incurred due to excessive footer installation with the poor soil. Funding of this cost and adding back in original cuts to initiate construction to be discussed with the finance. We're proceeding with the hiring of a second support specialist position. Megan Sharp, a previous dispatcher, was hired to fill in one of the positions. A draft basic traffic calming plan was created for review and discussion. We have ordered one additional traffic analyzer with the funding recently allocated by council. We have completed traffic speed anal, now, analysis on Amherst Boulevard, Lincoln Avenue and Tolan Street. Those should be available for review on the apps, traffic survey section soon. They're requesting funds be moved from the dispatch salary line to miscellaneous to pay for central dispatch for the year 62,000. That is also ordinance 18225, which will be coming up on the new business. We have adopted an undated agency shoulder patch at the request of officers. The collaboration designed by agency members is intended to better reflect the London community. It includes the Madison County Courthouse, the Eternal Flame from Opata, Peace Officers' Memorial, and Weet Shast, along with both U.S. and the Ohio flags. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto city official reports. Steve?
I know. Ray? Okay. Uh, I'll start with the, um, sidewalk proposal. So I, I know there's been a lot of interest at the last couple times, or last couple meetings. I have talked with the, um, the contractor with City Logix. Uh, she did resend me the proposal since our last meeting. Uh, I reviewed it with her. We had some questions and there's some price changes we're looking at. Um, right now that sits in the Law Director's office waiting for that review. I hope to have it back tomorrow, um, that we would be able to sign that contract and, and then be able to move forward with the scheduling. So I did, I did ask a couple of specific questions. So obviously this time of year, questions about how long it would take and the process. Um, I know she, there was some administrative work on their side, but she indicated it would only take a roughly a week for them to actually do the, the, um, assessment. They use like a electric scooter and that that part of it would only take about a week. So as long as they get the other stuff done and depending on leaves and weather, that kind of stuff, um, it is possible that that part can be done, allowing them to build the, the report before winter. So, um, like say if I can get that back from the Law Director on the review tomorrow, then we'll sign it and send it forward then.
That's for the scan, right?
Yeah, I think City Logix is a company, I think, uh, that's the corporate, I, I think it's, Greg, do you remember, we just talked about that, the name, street?
Was it, wasn't it Street Scan?
Street Scan, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. Any other questions on that?
Um, can I comment very quickly?
Please.
Since, since you brought that up and, and Ms. Hyatt was, Ms. Hyatt was here and, uh, and the gentleman, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. Um, so I was, I, I put a post up, um, when the gentleman was hit by the semi. I didn't know what caused the accident. I don't, I really don't believe that he was in the road at that point where he shouldn't have been. However, my comments were, I see a lot of people in these, in the mobility scooters and even the wheelchairs that are in the road because the sidewalks are so bad in certain places. So I just want to share this number. Um, I pulled this off of, off that post yesterday and just so you know that there's an, a bigger conversation that's going on that no one here knows about, right? And it kind of went off the rails and there, people complaining about some other things, but, but the number is 28,584 times that that conversation has been viewed. 28,584 as of yesterday morning. So there's been a lot of conversation, whether or not they're showing up to address council or not. I appreciate the fact that you guys did, but I just wanted to bring that up since we just had that conversation, then I won't bring it up later. So thank you, Mr. Saltzman.
Do we know the condition of the gentleman that was injured? Or was he injured or struck? Do we know anything?
He was injured and transported. I, I don't have any additional information, like, and I, I know he's transported. I, I had seen on social media, he possibly had been released, but I, I can't verify that. I don't know.
Right, and, and I also seen that on social media that he was back home, had a big bump on his head. The, the police chief did tell me that it was very fortunate, the way that it happened, that it hit his scooter and it knocked him to the side. Had it not knocked him to the side and just knocked him over, the back tires of the semi would have ran over him. So it actually knocked him out of the way as the semi came on through and making that turn.
Where was this?
Ma, Main and High, and I, and if I'm not correct, or if I'm not incorrect, I believe the truck was turning from South Main onto, uh, right onto High Street.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, he was, he was in the crosswalk, it wasn't sidewalk specific and he was struck.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, and the truck driver cited for that too, so, um, I saw the video, it's horrendous, it truly is, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that, just on that note, I mean, I walk that, that particular intersection all the time and turning traffic is, I actually, I refuse to cross the street on the, that side of, um, Main and High Street because the, the turning traffic just doesn't pay attention. I always walk on the other side of the street. I don't know if there's, what, what do you do about that?
Something.
Something.
Yep.
How does it look there twice?
Oh, well, I can't tell you, I, I lost count of how many times. It got to the, I got to the point where I was, take out my phone and start making a video every time I was crossing, um, High Street on Main Street, um, because it was just ridiculous. Yeah. It's gotten, it's gotten better, but it's, it's still, um, it still won't cross on the other side of the street.
No, I, I, I agree. I think, uh, combination of pedestrians remaining and being aware, obviously they have responsibilities too, but, uh, the, the speed of the traffic, the people looking at their phone and not paying attention to the street, it's definitely different today than it was.
And I, and Mr. Saltzman, I know we had the conversation, I do want to thank you for picking up that contract, making that phone call, so maybe we can start to move forward with the information that we wanted to get, you know, at the start of the year.
Any other questions on that?
I had something else. We did, we had a work session, was it about three weeks ago?
Mm-hmm.
For sidewalks also, we discussed kind of how to approach, uh, what sidewalks to address first, and there was some discussion about various wards or the city, you know, being the primary, the first, uh, sidewalks to be addressed. And we also talked about, based on the street scan results, maybe going from the worst conditions sidewalks to the, and work your way up from the worst to the best.
Um, and, and I have one additional piece, if you don't mind, Mr. Saltzman. Um, yesterday, a friend of mine who lives in Plain City shared that Plain City has a sidewalk program in place. Um, so what they did was, they actually broke up Plain City into 13 zones and there's, in their legislation, it says that their village administrator can start a sidewalk program on his own. So Zone 1, if you know where Pastime Park is in Plain City, that's what they focused on this year. They've done the major work already and they're going back and doing the minor things, maybe just filling in gaps and things like that. It wasn't very specific. So I did go on and, and pulled down and, and we'll, we'll have to get this to all of the council members if you want to look at it. Um, there, uh, I pulled down their current, or what I could find is their current legislation. However, they're, they updated everything December of last year, so all of this legislation here is in red because it's all been changed since what I could see, right? And there's two points that I want to bring up that I'd like council to think of at some point, and we're going to do this now, not in, not in, uh, roundtable, I guess. Uh, two items of great concern I think we should think about. First item is if a sidewalk is damaged by tree roots, then they take this, the village takes care of it because those trees were planted within the right of way. And so that's one thing that they do. And the second one, um, I want to read this to, enhanced walkway areas, and this applies very specifically that are downtown. And it says, property owners who individual, uh, properties have bought an enhanced walkway that has been constructed by the municipality as part of an area streetscape, uh, are not responsible for the repair and replacement of the enhanced portion of the walkway. Enhanced walkways include brick and paper sidewalks, ornamental tree gratings and castings, or other hardscape elements that are located between the curb and the pedestrian accessible route. So, um, we have a lot of issues downtown because of tree roots that put bricks up and it was awful down there now. And, uh, Plain City addresses both of those issues and I think council needs to look hard at this, that we need to make those changes within our own legislation. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Saltzman, I didn't, but I had the information since we're talking about it.
Can I reclaim my time?
Yes, please.
Uh, since we're talking about traffic, let's talk about the traffic calming plan. I did meet with Chief, Chief Nickel, um, and had requested a, his, a, at the time he had a draft plan, I had asked to see that plan. Um, my understanding is assigned, I believe, to Sergeant Davis for updates. Um, and we're, we're going to start working that plan. It's a combination of another, a number of them. I believe somebody, maybe Mr. Boyd had, had created a plan based on Hilliard or Dublin. Um, there's a lot of inaccuracies, I'm sure, just how it was gathered, but we're looking at those to make sure it's current, um, and to try to implement as we move forward with, with the, uh, the rest of the traffic calming. So with the monies approved by council, I think we discussed last meeting, we ordered a, a covert traffic analysis, we already have one, they'll be utilized, we already have the trailer. Um, and as we look to what we need, now those signs and, and that other traffic stuff is expensive, so we're not just ordering something to say we have them. Um, you know, there's a street sign that has this actual speed limit with your speed But it's expensive, so before we order those, we're trying to figure out what we need and how that's going to work in. But we are moving forward with that plan and I hope within the next month or so we have it. However, I will say, there have been a number of complaints, both come in the police line and we've got them, and those are being addressed as is. I do want to address, I think a lot of times there's some inaccurate information out there or incomplete information. So, you know, the, the traffic, the traffic trailer is getting their speed. The whole intent of that is just like putting a cruiser there. It's that cruiser is to, people see it, it's a visual deterrent, to stop. I think people think it's all about just collecting data and that there's a number of different processes. And the complete plan, the traffic calming plan, will address everything from directed patrols, we're putting an awster there, putting the trailer, the speed signs, all the way to speed bumps, which is the very end of it to get to that point. But it is under review. We're trying to get a development of a plan, make sure it's logical, and I hope within the next couple of weeks, we'll have at least, I'll say a final draft, it's still being drafted, to be able to decide how we're moving forward with that, so. Any questions on that? If we can, let's move to the police building. So, I'm not going to give a bunch of numbers today because I don't have the specifics. As we've indicated before, the, the building is moving forward. If you've driven by, you look when you leave, they're moving right up on the walls, which is good. Talked to the project manager today. The hope is that midweek, by midweek next week, they can meet with all the subcontractors. The hope is because of the delays of the underground, that we get caught back up by doing multiple parts at once. We just have to meet with those vendors or with those contractors to make sure we can put, like start putting up the steel walls, getting it insulated and that, even before maybe the concrete's poured into the floors. But the whole hope was, within the next six to nine weeks, as weather starts changing, we get that stuff done, we can get the roof put on and we'll be under roof before bad weather gets here. The hope is then, that prevents us from getting any issues with additional cost and delays from not being able to work on it. With those delays, a quick explanation, so we had approximately $325,000, and I say approximate, I don't have the number exact, but we spent about $43,000 ground stabilization and then as they dug in, we had additional footer undercuttings that had to be done that cost us in excess of $280,000 in contingencies. So, large numbers of things that got us, the Mid-Ohio cost for the, we planned $4,000 for a, for a, a tap for the water fees, it's $140,000. So, there's several things. I'll have more specific numbers. Greg and I spoke, I won't say briefly, quite a bit yesterday about some of those changes. I'll have more, hopefully by tomorrow, I'll have more specific numbers, can send something out before the Monday finance meeting. I'm hoping for the finance meeting, as he mentioned earlier, that we'll have some specific numbers, so we can look. There were a couple of things that were good news, I'll talk more about that too at the finance meeting of some costs that we're going to save on it too, so. Earlier, you guys heard about the fire department, the changes. Chief Eads has a draft spec package ready for that. We hope to get it put out. But we had some other concerns. Councilman McDaniels had brought up concerns at the last meeting, or at the safety committee meeting about lentils. We're having that assessed, actually next Tuesday. I've got an engineer taking a look at that and hopefully be moving forward. So, the idea there is upgrade the bathrooms and then encapsulate or make sure the outside of the building is properly secured, not leaking, you know, we're trying to push out the maintenance so that our building survive with time. The sanitation, the same thing, so we're continuing the assessment of that building. We were looking at maybe replacing the roof, but we've found some additional dollar costs, I'll let Ken address this here once, that we're going to hold off until next year to make that roof repair and do temporary repairs ourselves till after the first year, just to make sure we're not overspending the money with some of the cost of disposal that we have. We talked about third ward, the stormwater, that is ongoing. We started boring underneath the railroad, supposed to start at Sunday night, there was delays because of the railroad, it's ongoing. We hope to be finished with that part of the boring on Friday and then that will tie in then to the Center Street side coming in. And then apparently, I think there's a 60-inch main on this side of, of the railroad tracks right there off of, I think it's Logan. So, when that part's done, that, that will lead right into that final phase, Councilman hit that you were speaking about. So, like everything else, nothing goes out of issues and there's been some breaks and some damages, but, but it's still moving forward as of four o'clock this afternoon, they were still moving forward to that. That's a 24-hour boring process, so, you know, literally the bore is like one inches at a time underground to get that pipe, so it's a, it's running 24 hours a day. The streets, so we talked about the ODOT project. We actually had a meeting, a conference call with them this afternoon, or late this morning. So, we are moving forward with both the 38 and the 42 paving project in, within the city limits and the upgrades there. We talked about things from, everything from the how it's marked and where on the side streets is connecting. We'll provide them, Matt, I got to get with you, I think I have to have something signed on that proclamation that was there. But once that's done, I think, I think that was, had to have it before October, the participatory legislation that you passed, we'll be moving forward that. They did confirm, so I think at the confer, at the committee meeting, we had talked of being able to push 56 and 665 to the other project and they did confirm. We'll have to reapply at that time, but the 56 projects major, it may actually save us some money because there's so much paving, the cost may go down, which saves us some money. So, we'll reapply for that in '27, which will be a 28 paving job. And unless there's something else, I think that's all I have for now. Unless you have questions.
Okay, we'll move on. Onto old business, up for seventh reading. Ordinance 150-25, can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
So, this is the seventh reading? Seventh reading of this. Basically, it's an energy aggregate that the city is, is contemplating, joining. Ms. Trainor's done some research on this.
Yeah, so, SOPEC, NOPEC are, they're both utility aggregators. They also provide a lot of other services. They're almost quasi-governmental in formation. In doing some research, it's really kind of boggling, a vast amount of information that's out there. And I ended up communicating with a couple of different utility brokers, some very, really knowledgeable people about how the aggregation program actually works. And I believe at this point in time, we are likely to go with a broker, have a broker, solicit different providers, of which SOPEC, NOPEC in, in fact, could be one of them, and then just compare what kind of rates, the, a broker is typically able to get a better rate than by direct contract with, between the municipality and the, or the provider. They do charge a very nominal fee for their service, but the fee is still less than what the amount that we would be paying as end users if we did a direct contract with any individual supplier. So, they, they are very much worth their, the cost of doing business. We have communicated and are looking, we've signed some release of information and are hoping to have some real comparison numbers very shortly. Just council, just be warned, we might have to move quickly with a special session if, if we are under a true time limit in order to get in with a new provider before our current contract expires on December 1st.
Okay, questions? You said, said we are, we've signed some things to get?
No, 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 no. All we've signed at this point is a release for them to extract information. We have not, we have not signed anything with any.
But you're working with the, the safety service director on this? And we may very well have to just kill that piece of leg, these two pieces of legislation because they specify SOPEC.
If, SOPEC and NOPEC both have similar pieces of legislation, however, if, if for some reason we choose to go with SOPEC, then we don't have to kill this, but.
Right.
At the, the numbers that we're getting right now are, the SOPEC kilowatts per hour rate was a little bit above market from some of the other providers.
Okay.
If, if it's a cost-only analysis, which it, it doesn't have to be, but if it is, then SOPEC is a little pricier than some of the other providers that we could be utilizing. So, stay tuned.
So, with that too, that may require, so I, I do have some uneasiness to make sure we're on the same page. I think she did a great job explaining. But that may require that I sign a, a contract also that authorized them to work on our behalf. That could be in direct conflict, this, I want to make sure we're on the same page about that before I sign the contract. So, them to work on our behalf as the broker to, then he would go get that information.
Right, right.
So, we'll need a piece of legislation to allow you to sign the contract?
I don't think, I think it's more of a.
It's like a professional.
A professional services. I think I could probably sign that. Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a direct cost on that, correct?
No, the city doesn't have a direct cost with that, because it's a, it's a end-user supplied cost.
Yeah. Any objection or any concerns about that part? I mean, I, I think we're working towards the end result, but it's not in tune with the, specifically with that legislation, the way it was originally written.
Right.
So, at this point, we should leave this on?
We might as well. Just on the off chance that, you know, we end up going with SOPEC, we would have to probably still engage into their bylaws and their governance program if that's the, the utility supplier that we end up, that is recommended to us by the broker.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, on to ordinance 151-25, can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Copy, paste, repeat.
All the same information.
Okay, up for fifth reading, resolution 159-25, can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, this was first brought up to try to help the sanitation department. Where are we at on that, Steve?
I'm still not prepared to make a recommendation. I will say, some way I've found out, our cost for recycling, so there's a couple of things that we have found out, I think we talked about it at the meeting. One is the cost for recycling in the city is, they, they base it on a 60 cents per household for the cost of disposal, which I think we pay about $1,800, we, or I'm sorry, a month to Allen County for that disposal. The, but, our, our additional cost, which I think Rex, when his last meeting, I think he did address some of those, those costs that were there. The biggest concerns I have are the cost of, which I think, Mr. McDaniels, you brought up, we've got running guys on routes twice, run the equipment, those are numbers I, I think we can estimate but not be able to get specific. But other concerns we have are, like we're taking the counties, everybody from the county is bringing recycles in here, that, that's additional time that we're spending. It's where on the equipment that we're renting or paying for and then, you know, when you look at the, the cost of disposal, as it goes up, we're accountable for that. So, I, I think there needs to be a hard look at, at minimum of the rules and as soon as we confirm those numbers, I, I would like to say that the next meeting will know, but I, I will say, one way or the other, we have to make a decision about, like it needs to go out for bid, for the regular recycling and for the, not for recycle, I'm sorry, for the, for the sanitation, no, help me out here. Thank you. The trash rumpkey currently has a contract, it expires in December. We're going to have to have those numbers because we're going to have to rebid that to go and have everything. Hopefully by the next meeting, we'll be prepared to do that.
Don't you think, Greg, you'll leave it on?
I, I will say, it clearly, the cost of recycling is, it's costing us money. We have some additional funding, what we see, is that for disposal? We've already exceeded this year, the cost of disposal that we had spent last year for trash hauling. So, overall, I mean, our costs are going up. We're, I, I don't know what a number looks like, but our costs are, are exceeding what we're bringing in, for sure.
Last year, we spent $401,000 for the entire year. This year, we're at $489,000 to date. So, it's significant and we've still got to get through the rest of the year.
So, that's for the regular trash hauling, the transfer of that from our facilities to what rumpkey takes and.
Correct.
Oh, takes away, okay.
I think there was some discussion too, that half the recyclables aren't recyclable because they're mixed with trash and aren't able to be used as recyclables. So, we're paying $1,800, $2,000 a month and that's, what, $24,000 a year and half of that is not, they're not being, that money's not being used to recycle material.
I, I did, I went and met with the, the employees at sanitation to talk about some of the issues they had. That's one of the things they brought up. So, they're going probably two days a week where the, you know, as they run their routes, there's probably over half the people that have mixed trash or just put absolute rubbish in it. And, you know, so they've got, and once it goes in, it's got to be sorted before it can be put in the, in the recycle. It's not, there are definitely things that are not effective about the system that is running now, so.
Will it help now, if this is implemented?
I, I don't think I can give you an honest, I, I tell you, I think that's the way that we're probably leaning, that it's not. I, I think there's other things that have to be looked at to just say to go do it. I, I'm not going to promise you next meeting I have all the answers, but we're, we're much close to getting there. I, I do think one thing's had to be looked at is, you know, there's a lot of people that have come in just because of the recycling changes and are upset because they're changing, you know, I think it's called Union Recycling is the one that has that. What, what efforts will they make otherwise? We have to have another meeting with them, talk about it to see how that will be implemented. I, I can't, I can't give you a recommendation right now, but I hope in the next two weeks we'll be able to have definitive numbers and be able to speak to you about it.
Leave it on then?
Yeah.
Yeah, just leave it on.
That'd be my suggestion also.
Okay, up for a third reading, the resolution 167-25, can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
This is a request to increase appropriations to do a temporary contracting with Clemens Nelson for a human resources specialist. This would be covering the cost of September through the end of the year.
Correct.
And so, we're in September, have we engaged with Clemens Nelson's for this?
I have, yes.
Okay.
During the meeting, I said I'd let, a little bit to get me started, but then I would need money and she's aware of that, you know, waiting for your guys' approval or denial of money.
So, and this would hopefully be a good head start with identifying not only where the most major needs are, but also providing some of the resolution to address those needs, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I assume that'd give us a good feel for how Clemens Nelson's performs?
Yeah. She's been great so far. She's right now looking through our policies, our PPM. Again, I know we just passed certain things, but she's, you know, hitting the ground running with ideas and, and policies to get us up to date with compliance rules and such. So, I think it will be very, very positive for the city of London.
So, we've had lots of discussions about this. We've made our auditor go through a bunch of hoops and make a lot of phone calls and get emails. And I will tell you that in consideration of this, when you and I have talked, not necessarily in those meetings, but we've talked outside of this a few times, you know, there's, there's positions, years ago, there used to be an extra position in that office that, that hasn't been funded or used for a long time. And we are now, we're now shipping out our payroll and now we're going to be shipping out our HR. And could, would we be better served for her to have another person come in and take care of those things instead of shipping those out and we're paying an additional cost outside of those department cost? So, you know, after I've thought about it, I, I really like the idea, I think that she could probably use the extra person, but she'd have, they would have to take on these responsibilities or work that out within their office to take on these responsibilities so that we're not shipping that out. So, that's just my opinion of that.
Swear of council's wishes?
I would move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
No.
Mr. Hayes?
This is just through the end of the year, right?
Correct.
Right.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniels?
No.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 167-25, it's passed. Onto resolution 176-25, can I get motion to read by title and number? Onto resolution 176-25, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
This is for lawn mowers that the city no longer meet, needs.
Just a, a single lawnmower, is that correct?
There was a mower and I believe something else.
Mower, it was a chipper?
Yeah, I think it was a chipper. This is the third reading, so I guess move to adopt.
Have they added to this, I only see the lawnmower.
No, it was the first come up.
Looks like it's just a lawnmower.
Yeah, I think it was just one mower. Blew a motor, the cost of repairs exceeded over half the cost of a new mower, and, and with just with that plus previous.
It's like $5,000 put into the engine.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoff?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 176-25 has passed. Onto resolution 180-25, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
This is regarding the Madison Reserve project, housing development plans for East High Street. Public hearing on this matter, we've had, first of all, we've had plenty of discussion on it, so I'm not going to elaborate on that at this point in time, and our public hearing is scheduled for our next meeting. I would suggest we leave it on.
Mr. President, if I may, so I had a number of questions that I'd asked before, and I had submitted some questions to the law director, and then I submitted some more questions to the law director, and I did get a response back today at 1:42. I've had a, a chance just to glance at that, but I had some, you know, I'm more than willing to share this with everybody, I'll just email so everybody's had a chance to look at that, instead of going through all of these, but it, it, I won't say it got down in the weeds so much, but it was kind of a little bit all over the place. However, I do want to bring some things up, and I was, I was hoping the mayor was here tonight, because I don't believe we have another member of the planning commission that's here that was on the planning commission when this was passed, right? So this is, this is the problem. But I want, if you have your computers open and you're looking at the same document that the clerk sent to me, then I want to point a few things out that I had, I'm, I'm questioning now, just today, when I went back through to make my notes, I started to question this. So if we, if you go to page 51 of our packet today, which is the planning commission recommendation, so that's their recommendation, and it says that the summary of action is to approve the rezoning preliminary development plan for residential subdivision, residential subdivision. The street was to be negotiated with appropriate parties, I mean, there's, there's, there's four items that they brought forth there. And then if we look at pages 58 to 60, this is the original application that we were forwarded, and it states on here, there's a couple of things that it states on here, it says the application type is for another review. Down below, it says requesting a rezoning preliminary development plan for a residential subdivision. On the next page, which would be page 59, it says existing land use slash development. It says agricultural land, but there's nothing else there, and I think those are the, those were the things that I saw, caught on that, because I compared that to the, to the, the information for Cypress, and that planning commission recommendation in the paperwork that was sent. So that's pages 76 through 79, if you're playing along and keeping score at home. Page 76 starts the planning commission recommendation, it's pretty vague, it's just for preliminary development plan approval. However, the application type, and I don't know what this means, says modification of PCD, PMU, PRD, zoning slash final development, so all of that. I don't know what any of that means off the top of my head, I was hoping to ask that question. And then when we go to the next page, which would be, I guess, 78, it says existing land use slash development, it says vacant and a planned unit development. So the reason why I point this up, or point this out between the two, is because the application for this, for Madison Reserve, does not say it's for a planned unit development. And everything that goes into this, the, the size of the lots, those can only be adjusted to that, those numbers, if it's a planned unit development. And I don't think that this application, or the recommendation of the planning commission, has addressed this properly. And I was hoping, and I'll, I'll send this to the planning commission, but my argument, again, wasn't with Mr. Gross, but when I went back through this and looked at this today, I mean, my argument was going to be with the planning commission anyway, because of the size of the lots. But that whole argument may go out the window, for the time being, if this isn't done the right way, if it's not a planned unit development, and it's not indicated in this, then I don't even know how we can consider this for what they're doing, because it doesn't meet the requirements of, of, of a subdivision with an R3, or, there's, there's different numbers in there, right? There's manufacturing, there's R3, I think there was an R2 part of that. You know, those each have their own requirements on what the square footage is for a lot size and building size and all of that. So we don't have anyone here today to address that from the planning commission, we'll have to get that for the next meeting, but I just wanted you guys to be aware, so you can look at it, you may have additional questions also. And I had additional questions, things that I wanted to bring up with someone with the planning commission, because there are some terms in here, and we have an attorney in our presence tonight, and one of the things I'm going to ask our attorney that's on council is if the word "shall" is used. If, if it says something "shall," so for example, in 126205, it says the proposed location of any planned unit development or any use within, within it, shall not adversely affect adjacent property, or the public health, safety, and/or general welfare. And if it's "shall," I, I think that's a strong word when it comes to legal terms. What, what say you, Ms. Attorney?
One of the first rules you learn when you're in legislation in law school is that a word means what a word means. The first ordinary usage is the, is the first order of business, so the word "shall" means "shall."
Okay, so when it says it shall not adversely affect adjacent property, we're hearing from people in the audience that say that it is affecting them, because of the size of the buildings, or the closeness of the lots, or the closeness to their yards. So that's something I would, I, I would like to address with the planning commission, you know, how, how they look at that compared to other things, you know, how do they say that that, that works for them, where it, it doesn't seem to work in, in other aspects? So, you know, there's, there's more, and we're going to have another meeting, and we're going to have a public hearing at the next meeting, but these are things, and I'll be willing to, more than happy to share the email with you that I'll send to the planning commission, so that everybody sees what I'm talking about, and I, I could be way off base. Now, I do have, as I said, we do have the email from the law director, she cleared up a couple of things for me. I don't necessarily agree, when Mr., when Mr. Boyd spoke earlier, there's three sections within the planned unit development part, and one, one section says that you can decrease the size of the lot 25 percent. The second part of that says, if you do that, you have to increase in other areas. And the third part says, however, if this is deemed by the planning commission to be low and moderate housed, or priced housing, that they can allow up to another 25 percent reduction, that brings it down to the 4219 number that Mr. Boyd said, so that's, the law director had given me the same number, so I'm sure the math's right on that part. But that's as a planned unit development, and that's, I think that's something we're going to have to work on. So that's, that's the information I have for the night.
Any other discussion? Paul, would you like to? Okay. All right, up next, resolution 181-25, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
As Mr. Eads was referencing, this is also a planning commission recommendation, this site is, if you're looking at the current Chamber of Commerce, to the right of that where the Cypress Church is seeking authority to, to build. There's a proposed building structure and providing for parking and other things. Also, public hearings scheduled for this matter on October 2nd, which is next council session, suggest we leave it on for further hearing.
Any other discussion? Would you like to make any comments? Okay. Onto new business, resolution 182-25, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
This goes back to what they talked about, dispatch salary line to miscellaneous pay for central dispatch for the year is $62,000.
So we have the auditor here, Ms. Auditor, I'd like to ask you a question. The $62,000, was that the original number? Didn't we, or wasn't that number going to be like $120,000 originally?
We only have half the year.
Pardon me?
We only have half the year, we contracted with them in July, when that service started, so we'll get invoiced in October for July, August, and September.
Okay, but what, I thought that number of 122,000...
The annual amount is 123, but we're, to get through this year, we only need half of that.
Okay, okay, so I thought that was the amount for this year total?
No.
The 120, for the remaining six months, because I thought their salaries were over $240,000 for the year.
It's prorated for this year, it's 123 annually.
Okay.
So they already have this, and they're just transferring?
It's, yeah, we're moving it from salaries down, and we can't do that without your guys' authorization.
There is an emergency on this, if I remember correctly?
Yes, we're anticipating an invoice in October, or the first payment due in October.
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on it?
Second.
And, and just to comment while you, since you brought that up, I mean, this is, we expected to do this, we just missed this somehow, right? We, we didn't somehow put this through.
Yeah, we did all the signage and everything to enter into contract, we just didn't move the money down to pay for it.
Okay.
Mr. Stoff?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Motion to adopt? Second.
Resolution 182-25 stays on.
All right.
So are dispatch able to be paid if this money does not?
No, I don't have the money to pay for it. It's not in his operating budget at all, it's only in personnel.
Okay, on to roundtable. John, I'll start with you tonight.
Thank you, everybody for coming out, very interesting conversations tonight. What about sidewalks, has been on for years and years and years, I hope maybe we'll finally end up learning something about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Trina.
Well, once we get through the utility aggregation, we'll probably move on and see if we want to work in the same vein with gas aggregation, because right now, we're only electricity aggregation, and I guess I'm going to start researching sidewalk grants next. In my free time, it'll be fun.
Are you able to forward that email, Greg, that you got from Andrea Dillon?
Yes, I'm, and, so we actually had a brief conversation today, and, you know, she, she, she asked me, did I think Mr. Saltzman would be, you know, willing to read the email and start to look into this, and I said I believe he would be, so I'll forward to everyone, including Mr. Saltzman, because there's a lot of information there, and there's still two more that she thought the, her friend Kevin Miller was going to get back with her on some things, so it'll be good to know if there's some money out there to help people out.
Is that Kevin from Flex Miller?
No.
Any, any?
Public Service Committee meeting is October 14th at 5:00 PM in the meeting room next door.
Rick?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, appreciate all the interest in everything that we're doing. Hopefully, we can get going on the sidewalks and, and some other things pretty soon. Want to thank all of our city employees for jobs well done, appreciate you all very much. We have a young man that plays football, named Carson Lewis, number seven. He was injured severely last Friday night in the ballgame, life flighted to Children's Hospital. I would just ask, this is a young warrior, and he's fighting back. Prognosis wasn't good at first, but it's getting better by the day, so I would just ask it, when you, while you're keeping the City of London in your prayers, and us, put Carson Lewis in there too, and pray for him for a complete recovery. Next safety service meeting will be October the 14th, 2025, 6:00 PM, conference room next door. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and I mentioned the, a discussion last week before the meeting, I'd like to say that the best part of coming out of that discussion, I think, was walking away knowing that, I do believe Mr. Saltzman is here to fix these problems that we've been neglecting and kicking down the road, so I'm feeling really good about that. And here in a few days, my wife will have been putting up with me for 35 years, and council thought they had it rough for the last one year and nine months, so that's all I've got.
Do we need, do we need a proclamation for that?
Yeah, she's a saint, I tell you what, you might just say that.
Okay, Greg?
I, I, I really enjoyed everybody coming out tonight, there was new faces here, they brought up new, you know, new problems, new questions. I think council has to hear those things. So many times, people make comments on Facebook, and I'll say this now publicly, if anybody's still playing along and watching the video, you know, those Facebooks on social media, they can be ignored, they will be ignored, because that is not an official way to communicate with the city. The city does read those, they have, they have people that read those, and they, they see those, but, but they're not going to get into arguments, and I can't blame them for that. So if, if someone out there, if you have a complaint, whether it's a sidewalk, or it's tall grass, or something that goes on, and you want to bring it forth, you know, come to the meeting, sign in, email us if you have to, send it officially through, through the city email, so that it can be addressed, because I think everybody does a really good job of, of responding to emails from the administration, the auditor, and everybody at this table, I think they do a good job of responding to emails, but that's how it has to come through, if you really want your problems and concerns to be brought forth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
May I comment?
Yes.
So in addition to that, I don't disagree, but I, I do want to say, like, our number, emailing me, the mayor, like, we deal with those daily, and I don't want people, there are people that have called that thought that was the only way they could get it done. Like, we, we deal with complaints every day or concerns, feel free, the same thing, that anything falls under me, you know, can be emailed to me or called to City Hall, 852-3243. You know, we will address those issues and, and hopefully in a timely manner to keep things resolved.
All right, thank you. Can I get motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.